All right, it's eleven, eleven oh two and I call to order the Sling County Commission Public Farming Meeting to order with a quick call.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Dowell.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you to join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'll move next to the public forum at time when the citizens can come forward to talk about issues that aren't on the agenda today. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to regular business. Item number one, road and bridge update.
Gary Nash, director, and Neil Cable, county engineer. I believe Mr. Nash will start off.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Morning.
How are you guys? All right, this will be the update for August and September for the maintenance division. For the shop guys, they took delivery of a 2015 Freightliner semi truck. They also took delivery of a 2015 F-350 crew truck, which you can see a picture of it up there. And then a 2015 F-250 survey truck for Terry. They also performed service on and repaired numerous road and bridge vehicles, heavy equipment, and mowers. And then shop and yard cleanup has begun and will continue until complete. The rural operators, they've been out mowing in the territories over the last month doing ditch cleaning and laybacks and then maintaining the roads throughout the county. Work completed by the guys out in the field. We got improved and upgraded Mayhoun Road. I got about five different pictures here. That's what it looked like beforehand. And this was to beef up that road to support closing of a bridge. Kind of hard to see, but there's a huge mastiff dog right down there.
Yeah.
The guys were out on this project for about thirty days, two different crews, and he was kind of the local pet. He came out and saw those guys every day. They did a lot of great work on this road. It looks really, really good.
It's basically our equipment there?
Yes, all of our equipment.
What's that, what's that first piece of equipment? Is that a bulldozer or is it a tractor?
Well, it's like a tractor.
On a sheet or something?
Actually, yeah, I think so, yes, sir.
I know that backhoe was pretty old, wasn't it?
That was a round, a tobacco.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it looks like now as it's done. They seeded it and took straw out there to keep it from eroding. All right, next thing is we replaced a closed bridge on Link Road just north of K-40 Highway. It was actually a bridge and they actually replaced it with a covert. Looks really good and got that opened back up. Then they had a crossroad covert replacement on Sunnyside Road north of Salinsburg Road. What it looked like beforehand, it was a concrete covert that had broken. So it's kind of hard to see these pictures, not light. What it looks like now.
On that, on that one on Link Road, do we burn all that stuff that piled up there or how's that taken care of?
We haven't burned anything yet that I know of.
No, but I say will we burn that?
Eventually. They have to let the stuff dry for a year or two. Usually they pile everything up, all the trees, and after a year or so, after it dries out, and then sometimes during the winter months, they'll go out and burn it out. They talk emergency management.
I just noticed there's a big pile out there a couple of months ago when I was out there.
All right, they also mowed some humps out on Old 81 Highway in the places where the asphalt patches between the concrete slabs that heaved up over the summer heat. We replaced another crossroad covert there on Waterwell Road east of Lightville. There it is beforehand and after. Those guys, they do really good work out there. They placed a box covert on Miles Road north of K-40 Highway with a covert. Then they crossed another crossroad covert replacement on Kip Road north of Cloud Street. Replaced a box covert on Parsons Road east of Honack Road with a covert. You can see on this one, they got the head wall damage here from an accident and the head wall on this side's completely missing. So they replaced that. So you can see it's all gone now. All right, they also replaced two crossroad coverts on Ohio Street south of the Ottawa Counterline. Rail line ditches repaired washouts on Rose Hill Road west of Simpson Road. That's what these pictures are here. Then they fixed some erosion repair on State Street west of Lightville Road. Mr. Wyatt's property. Had to take a pumper truck out there to put concrete down into the washout where it washes down into the creek. And then they did another crossroad covert replacement on Hopkins Road south of Lapsley Road. This just shows the condition of the tube prior, way it collapsed in. And then they repaired it. Constructed an earth embankment on Waterwell Road east of Ohio Street for the Stuart Everhart driveway. So there's what it looked like before. And the driveway will be in the next picture, but you'll see it down in here.
How much, how much time did it take to do something like this?
Took about three to four days if I remember right. Took about sixty loads of dirt.
Where'd the dirt come from?
Some dirt they had there at the crossroad. At the yard.
So now he just needs to put the grass in and put rock on, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a little tube right down there?
Yes, sir, right down there.
He should be pretty happy, huh?
Yeah, that looks good, too.
He did call me and said, "Thank you for getting that done." He really appreciated that we finished that up for him.
Yeah, that looks good. One more thing off our checklist.
What checklist?
Yep. All right, so this is out at the road and bridge yard itself. We got the two ponds out there and we started getting some sinkholes along the side for the bridge where the coverts are starting to fall apart, basically. And then there was a dip in the concrete. You can't really see it in the picture. But there was like two huge voids underneath there, so it was all just caving in, so we had to rip it up and start it to replace it. There was four huge corrugated tube pipes that were running through here. You can see one of the tubes there and how it's all eroded away and rusted out. That's our communications computer lines that run from engineering to road and bridge. But they used Lego blocks. Neil drew all this up. And this is them building the forms here to pour the concrete. They're still, still working on it now. They're getting the rebar in it right now and then probably, I'm guessing, two to three days before they start pouring. That's it for pictures. We've halted aggregate for work tasks consisting of 150 tons of sand, 180 tons of Lincoln roadstone, 1,095 tons of crush rock, and 487 tons of AD3 throughout the county. Traffic control, those guys have been maintaining up to 245 signs countywide, placed and removed numerous road closure barricades throughout the county. Checked temporary barricades and barrels twice a week. Completed approximately 90% of the yellow centerline markings and then 10% of the white edge line markings on the county roads. Placed temporary road signs near the railroad crossing there on Country Club. And then they posted those signs at the same location while schoolers performed the temporary fix on those tracks. Once it was done, that crossing is still fairly rough, so we decided to put up permanent signs that says, "Rough railroad crossing ahead." And then we also put up advisories, speed of 10 mile an hour for crossing those tracks. Other stuff we got going on, we've been working with the pumping patch on detour sign placement due to Lapsley Bridge closure that we just closed yesterday. Or Monday, excuse me. Exploring cost-effective options proposal for a new road and bridge facility. Been doing a bunch of data gathering for truck driver and heavy equipment operator salaries, compare and contrast with surrounding counties and the Sling work sector. We're gathering a list of needed shop safety and environmental improvements that we need out in the vehicle maintenance shop and on the yard itself. We're also in the infancy stages of working for a federal replacement of Crooked Bridge there on Reese Road near the Air National Guard bombing range. They are fairly interested in getting that replaced since the other Reese Road Bridge is going to be closed, and when it's a half-concrete, half-wood structure. They're going to declare, basically, it's a safety issue for those guys for responding to fires on the north end of the range.
On Reese Road?
Yes. On basically Farley Road. You take Farley to get to the rest of the north end of the range. This is the same principle that they used for when they built the road going out to Crisis City, where it's federal funds that pay for it. And we did a demonstration of electromagnet by the Air National Guard on Waterwell Road. It's an eight-foot wide tow behind a tractor or a truck. It's got a generator on it that powers the magnet itself. And we took that thing out after they graded Waterwell Road and we picked up 12 pounds of iron just in two and a half miles. So, and I actually left the jar. I got the jar full of the stuff I was going to bring in here today to show you guys, but it's on the truck. I can go get it afterward if I get done.
Find any money in there?
Say again?
Money, any money?
I didn't see any money.
Silverware jewels?
There was a.
No, it won't.
A bunch of nails and washers and just a little bit of everything.
Your tire repair people don't want you to do that.
No, I know they don't.
That usually sticks some of them straight up, but they don't go ahead and pick it up.
All right, over the next two months, we're going to start prepping for winter ops, getting the trucks serviced and ready to go, and getting the spreaders ops checked for salt. We're going to complete that yard box project, begin the dirt work for the Thompson Bridge so we can get that opened back up. Start construction on that Lapsley Bridge project. I'm going to start working a debris removal plan with emergency management. And then we're going to start dirt patching countywide. We've done a little bit here and there, but it's going to get full swing here shortly. And we have Roger Penrow's retirement December 18th. That's pretty much it for the updates. There should be another sheet attached, I think, for the purple wave items if you guys would want to.
Yeah, I had it upstairs.
I can read it off to you if you want me to, or you can look at mine.
No, I don't think so. Just does anybody have any questions on the purple wave? I guess on those graders, some counties have magnets right on the graders that they.
Yeah, they got it right on behind the blades, yeah.
They're a little, little rough on them and it's a little work for the grader man because he has to get off and clean it off, but they, I know a grader up north, he has one and he has a bucket full of stuff all the time. He takes off and puts on that thing.
It sets fairly low to the ground and this, this other magnet, this tow line magnet is much, much stronger. So, but it was just, it was a demo to see if, you know, maybe if we could find one sometime, use one, it might be worth, especially with all the bridges that we've been constructing and all the box coverts. Seems like there's a lot of stuff left over that doesn't get picked up like it should.
There's a lot of nails, those concrete nails that they use out there. When I took pictures out there the other day, there was tons of nails at the end there on, what is it?
Thompson?
No, the other one, the one that's.
Wyman.
Yeah, that's looking good. Boy, they've got a lot of structure to come out from under there, don't they?
Yeah, I've got some pictures.
I do, too.
How are your, we've had, been short on drivers, employees, and have you filled all those in there? Things pretty good with the drivers and the heavy equipment operators?
Heavy equipment, we're setting good right now. We're now short, as of yesterday, three truck drivers. So.
And we've talked about maybe doing something, reclassifying the pay. We need to put that on our agenda and do that. Because we've got a problem there. We've always had a problem. It's not solving itself. It hasn't and it's not going to.
I think that they have made an effort that they can start them over on the pay schedule, you know.
We need to get the pay schedule reasonable, what other truck drivers get in this county.
But you have to have equity throughout the county.
So you, you need a raise too, then, is what you're saying?
No, I'm not talking about me, John. I'm perfectly happy I told you.
Just because one, because we can't hire one doesn't mean everybody doesn't need that raise.
But it does make an equity that we can have some liability. So I think you need to talk to your human resource director, too, about that.
Well, I know we can't hire truck drivers because we pay them so low and we can't keep them and we need to do something about it, so.
I think the HR, when I talked to Marilyn, she said something about in 2016, they're doing another study. I think you guys approved, approved a study.
It's not, it's for everyone, yeah.
But it's not, but it's, yeah, okay.
And I, and I didn't, I didn't vote for that. I want to mention that. I didn't approve.
But anything will help at this point, so that's all I got.
On a personal note, I just wanted to ask how you are doing in this new position. Everything, the learning curve still?
Yeah, I'm still learning every day. Every day I learn something new, so it's fun to go out and watch the guys work. I'm amazed at their capabilities and their, with the equipment, just what they can and can't do with that equipment. Like I said, I've seen those guys with those excavators. It's like an extension of their hand. I mean, the way they move it around, it's just, it's just very, very graceful. It's something I've never seen before. So it's pretty neat. Job itself, no, the job's great. I love it. It was a really, to me, a smooth transition from my previous career. So, you know, being a commander out there to moving into being a director is pretty much the same, same thing. I'm just learning more and more about roads and bridges than I ever thought I would.
Good, good.
But I'm enjoying it.
Good to hear.
Another thing I wanted to mention, when we have a good rain, we need to get Ryan out there and see where those leaks are at because we paid to fix those and he'll, we got a 15-year warning, is it?
Yeah, I think so.
So, we had one, good rain on a Friday, and I was going to come out, but it was on the weekend. It was Friday night, so nobody was out there.
Right.
But when we have a good rain, we need to get him out there and, and if, you know, you said there's some leaks, so.
That's what I've been told. I haven't seen it.
Well, we need to, we need to see him and take care of it.
Well, he's had rain out there since he's been there. Yeah, they have one Monday, too.
It's always been on the weekend, so.
When you, when you replace the covert, you shape the road bank and sloping off. There's a certain percentage slope that has to be put on that. Is that right?
We, we always shoot for four to one if we can get it, but we frequently don't have enough rideaway to put a four to one. A four to one's a pretty manageable. If you, if you drive off the road, you can usually recover. But that's a function of how much rideaway and how, how rolling the terrain is. So frequently, we're forced to go steeper than that, unfortunately.
Well, I've talked to you about this before, but where the landowner is willing to mow and maintain that, it would seem only reasonable if the county'd make it so that a mower could sit on there sideways, not be so steep that you can't even mow it. That's a safety issue as well. If it's that steep, you're going to turn over. And I know I talked to Dave about that before and he said, "Well, we can't do that," but it seems to me only reasonable that we would. Where you got the landowner willing to maintain the rideaway and you got that thing so steep that he can't. It's a safety issue as well as a saving to the county to mow.
Yeah, and again, you know, three to one is about the maximum that you can mow like that. I know because I live on a steep hill. But four to one is preferable for, for, you know, cars leaving the roadway. But, but again, the way the roads were opened up here in Sling County in the 1800s, we had very limited rideaway and we're not really allowed to put our earth embankment on private property. So we keep it within the road rideaway and that forces us to be sometimes two to one slope, which is pretty steep, yeah.
Even when the property owner allows you to do it or is it still?
That would be a legal question for Montoya. I mean, typically, we're not, we don't go on private property, yeah.
Well, property owner might request it even.
All right. Oh, we can look into it and see.
I can give you an example of that.
Commissioners, I think Gary was wanting approval, too, to dispose of those option items if you would do an act.
You guys got it?
I'd make a motion that we put these items on purple wave, which has been very good for the county and that I'd make that motion.
One second. It's a motion and a second. All of those, is there any public comment? Bring it back to the commission. All of those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Passes five zero. Awesome, thank you.
This is the engineering division report and this is mostly the contractual projects. And I'll just go to the slides. If you have any questions on the written portion, we can visit about that afterwards. The first one, project is that Thompson Road Bridge replacement that you're familiar with. This was early August, pouring the final abutment on, on the north end. And then you can see the rebar placed. This was, this happened all through August. They set the formwork and the reinforcing and on the 24th of August, they poured the bridge deck. I'll go through these real quick because there's quite a few. Again, this was the 24th. You can see the concrete pump set up and the crane in the background and kind of a fun day to actually see it come together. They're beginning the concrete placement and that's right at the end of the concrete placement. This is after the, the deck is set and they're start, they're putting the concrete for the corral rail. That's the project superintendent right there in front, Alex, and he's a good guy to work with. We've worked with him on many projects. That's finishing the rail on the, on the bridge. We had some issues with a slight gap between the diaphragm and the exterior girders. It's kind of where my cursor is there. It's hard to see in that dark. But what we had to do is we worked with the contractor on a solution to that and drilled through the deck and actually put epoxy grout in through the deck surface. Kind of, that's mixing the epoxy grout and that's actually putting the grout through the deck to repair those diaphragms. With a man underneath to monitor the installation of the grout. And then moving on to the next bridge is our Wyman Bridge. This was another one that through August, they were preparing the formwork and the reinforcing steel. Got a few pictures of that. First, they, they finished the pile driving on the, on the south bridge pier right at the beginning of August, this two-month reporting period we're doing. So that's what it looked like at the first of August. That's looking down into the pier formwork. It's kind of hard to see, but it's just a big kind of gaping hole. The formwork is set and the reinforcing and the piling there. And that's placing the concrete into the, into the pier. And that's what the pier looks like after they've stripped the forms. And then they drive all the, they have the concrete piers that you can see there and also they drive the wood piling to support the falls work for the superstructure. And there they place the riprap around the piers that, it's really hard to place that once you put the deck on it. It's a lot easier with a clamshell on a crane to place it than try to get it underneath after you're done. There's all the rebars set in place and they're ready for the pour. And this happened right at, again, right at the end of August. And that's a really dark shot. It's my artistic shot. It's like at six in the morning, they start the concrete pour and it's got all the equipment set up and. So it's kind of dark out there in the morning when they first start and then concrete starts coming and. Let's see here, just the formwork underneath. This picture is awful dark. You can see the shiny vests and then they're, now they're starting to place the concrete, which is about seven o'clock in the morning. And they pump the concrete. You can see the pump dangling down there over the bridge deck and the concrete placement underway. And that's right at the very end of the pour, finishing it out. Went really smoothly and the deck's in place. Looks really good. And, let's see here. So right now, we're, we're in the stage of the wrecking out all that formwork. This was about, this is a week, a week ago, week and a half ago. And so the formwork's being currently removed and we'll be doing the railing next week. And that's kind of a profile look right at the end of the placement. And then we have a few box projects that we worked on. This, this is the, this is the Mirror Road, 10th mile north of Hedberg Road. And these are all by Reese Construction. This is just kind of walk you through a box being built real quick. Finishing the aprons on the, on the box. Placing the top slab, a lot of formwork. And that's the finished box. It's a two-barrel box. And that's when it's all dressed up and, and again, these are the four to one slopes like, like we were just talking about as far as grading out the slopes. That's before they got it all mulched and seeded, but what we do do that, too, with all our projects. We've got another one that, we've started a couple more boxes and just, I mean, they're fairly repetitive, but from an engineer, they're really kind of neat, I think. Everyone is unique and, and so each one is kind of, kind of a neat project. And then we had some damaged guardrail. We had an accident on the Magnolia Road. They ran, you can see the skid marks up on the road. Somebody, somebody really plowed into the guardrail. We did a, we had Reese Construction do a repair of the guardrail. There's the repaired post. And that's when you can't, these pictures are so dark, but the skid marks you can see on the pavement, but that's the repaired.
If you drive by it, you can see it.
Yeah, you can see it, yeah.
He just went right into it.
He hit it pretty hard, but, but you know, that, those costs will pass right through to the, to the, yeah, to the insurance carrier for the. to the, to the, um, yeah, to the insurance carrier for the, for the motorists. So, uh, the, the county has to carry the cost at least till, and then we get reimbursed by the insurance company.
So he, he identified himself then or whoever?
Yeah, there's an accident report on it, yeah. He left parts of his car there. And then we're completing, we're in the high ninety percent on completion of all the inspection of all the culvert pipes around the county, I just leave that kind of in as a placeholder. Uh, other projects that I don't have pictures on, and Gary mentioned, we closed, uh, Lapsley Road yesterday. The earthwork contractor moved in and he's already got it cleared and, um, and King Construction will be moving in, uh, probably in the next day or so and start work on the foundation for that bridge. Uh, crack sealing, the contractor will be back here at the end of October to finish up what crack sealing, we kinda waved him off, it got too hot in, in the middle of summer there to, uh, complete that work, so we waved him off till fall, but he'll be back here in a couple of weeks to finish that work up. Uh, Wyman, we submitted the, or I submitted the federal fund exchange, like within a day of that, that's where the big bucks are spent when you're pouring that superstructure. So we immediately, uh, we paid King Construction and submitted all the paperwork for, for reimbursement to KDOT and we should have that reimbursement any day. And that money will then go, we've already delivered the plans downtown to Nancy Bassett for bidding the Gibson Valley Road Bridge replacement, so as soon as we get those funds deposited, the federal fund exchange funds back in our bank account, we've got them spent again, so we, we try to keep that money committed to, to bid, to bridge projects, but, um, and then the other thing at, uh, APAC, um, all that additional asphalt work that you guys approved, as you recall, the extension to the contract, that'll start tomorrow actually, down South Gibson Valley Road from K four to the, to the McPherson County line, so that, we get APAC back starting tomorrow and they'll stay with us till they finish all that work. And even out there, uh, probably the biggest disruption of traffic flow is when they're gonna move out there in front of Phillips Lighting and do that two miles south of Waterwell Road, so that, uh, they're gonna say that to the very end so that as they deliver asphalt to these other projects, they're not driving over what they freshly placed there, so they'll say that to the very end.
What was the completion on that? How long was that gonna take?
Uh, they'll be out there, we'll have them probably for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, weather dependent, obviously, you know, if it turns south on us, then it could get stretched out.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of truck traffic will be back on that.
Yes.
For harvest here in the next week or two.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the beans are going now, but...
Yeah.
The milo will be going here shortly after that.
Yeah. That's all I got.
You, you indicated, uh, on this, uh, KDOT bridge issue, if that's closed, that's settled.
Yes, yes, that, uh, yeah, uh, that we, uh, challenged that and I think, I think it was a good effort on our part because that's a lot of obligation for the county, probably a million and a half dollars, and we found no, no paperwork in our files, uh, where the transfer of the ownership from KDOT to Sling County had ever occurred. These are bridges within, they're still within KDOT right of way, yeah, which is most unusual. Uh, but finally, after more than a year, uh, they, they supplied paperwork, uh, where the commissioners had signed, had accepted ownership of, of these bridges back in the sixties.
Yeah, nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-two.
Yeah, and sixty-nine.
And the right, is the right of way issue, if we've gotta go in and fix them or repair it, is that an issue still?
That's, that's, uh, future, uh, that's gonna be, uh, a challenge. It will be a challenge.
Yeah.
On one of the bridges especially, the one that's most, um, deteriorated, the one on Kip Road, that, that one's gonna be difficult.
Is, is this the time to do something about that before we get to there or not?
Uh, there's, it's really, uh, there's little you can do right now, there's some kind of, uh, some repairs we could do, um, but it is in a deep embankment, right, right on the approach to the Kip Road Bridge over the interstate. It's right at the base of the, uh, approach slab, so to make any kind of repairs is gonna be difficult, extremely difficult, costly.
When we were arguing this whole fact, we were trying to show the, uh, the lawyers from KDOT who never came out, but that if we start work on this, it's gonna affect traffic on I seventy because we're, we're gonna have to dig into the embankment that holds up I seventy, so we're like, do you guys really want us to have ownership of this and work on this? But they didn't care, they just, here's the paperwork, you guys own it, it's yours.
That was done back in the sixties and we didn't even know it, huh?
Right.
Well, it was, it was, everything looks nice when it's new, but then everything gets old and, and then eventually it has to be replaced and so when you accept it when it's brand new, you gotta remember that someday some, some future commission is get, gets to, uh, repair or replace it at great expense. So I mean, be cautious what you sign.
Now, this is not, this is not on their easement though, right?
It is in, is when, is within their right of way, both...
Well, why would we, why would we be, be responsible for their right of way?
Because we accepted it.
Be like the railroad, wouldn't it?
We accepted it. The county commission signed, February, said that we will, we will take ownership of these two bridges.
When was that done, in sixty?
In the sixties. And one, one was sixty-two and one was, I think, sixty-nine was the other one.
Well, should there not be some understanding that if we've gotta go in there, they give us right of way to do it, or what? I mean...
I don't think we want right of way up to the bases there, overpass.
But I think that would happen though.
No.
KDOT would have to be there to watch what we're doing too, to make sure we're not screwing up I seventy when we do it, so... 'Cause it's gonna affect closing traffic probably on one lane for sure, so...
Yeah, 'cause very well. Is there a R-DOT over that part right there?
Yes, sir.
That, that isn't ours though, is it?
Kip, no, no, not the overpass. I mean, they, they selectively give you what they...
Close the road.
Yeah.
All right, good update, gentlemen. Do we have any, um, further questions or public comment?
Norman Manilis, Pleasant Hill Road, the commissioner just mentioned mowing the right of way. Any activity on county right of way, if you cause damage, you're exposing the county to liability issues. So you can't be mowing the right of way next to your property. It's a liability issue. You do anything and you'll cause an accident if somebody drives off there, then the county has a liability issue.
I was thinking that in the county, the property owns to the middle of the road.
No, but it's leased. Once, once the county has possession of that right of way to the middle of the road, they take care of the maintenance and everything. The landowner cannot do any operations on the right of way. Check with your lawyers.
There's sure a lot of, going north of town, most of the...
Well, they do it and get away with it.
What about the...
There's a guy east of town that mows it fifty feet on, but...
What, what about the people that come in and swath the, and take the, that saves the county a lot of money, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
And it really looks nice and it's...
You gotta get a permit to do that on the state highways, I know that, now I don't know how you work with the county.
I don't know that we have...
Adjourn any landowner and if he doesn't do it, some other person can come in and make a application to mow this right of way, but that relieves the county of liability.
Well, I know that north of town, where I travel a lot, people wanna keep their property looking nice.
Right.
And they really do, they really keep it nice and...
A question for...
Exposing the county to a lawsuit.
Yeah, it's a legal, it's, it's a legal question that I don't, I can't answer, so we'll just, uh, but thank you for the comments. Any other comments? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work. We'll move to item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for September twenty-nine, twenty fifteen.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the county commission minutes of September twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Under, under announcements, um, we will reconvene probably about five minutes after this meeting upstairs for session number three. Um, and I also want to, um, let the public know that there is an opening on the solid waste committee that hasn't been filled and, um, would like some interest in that. We talked a little bit about this upstairs today in our earlier session about, um, what this committee does and if anybody is interested in recycling, I think, um, uh, it'd be something to be good, uh, good to attend, so let us know, fill out the form, get on the website. Um, I know a, a little bit of this is just approving grants, there's a, there's a little fee on every, uh, load that comes into the landfill and then that gets returned, uh, to people that apply for those funds for recycling. And so if this is of interest to you, please, uh, please let us know, please fill out the form. Is there any other announcements today?
I'd like to read another quote today. This is from Patrick Henry, if you're familiar with his name. "An appeal to arms and to the God of hosts is all that has left us. Sir, we are not weak if we make a proper use of those means which the God of nature hath placed in our power. Besides, sir, we shall not fight our battles alone. There is a just God who presides over the destinies of nations and who will raise up friends to fight our battles for us. His life so dear or peace so sweet as to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery? forbid it, almighty God, I know not what other course, what other course, what, I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death."
Thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I move...
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned and we will meet, uh, we will meet session number three in, uh, five minutes.